Good evening. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. My pleasure to call and order this June 3 meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. And ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant Orange tonight is Lieutenant Horacio Bowen. Thank you for being with us tonight. I'd recognize our city manager for his update, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of events coming up, just to make sure you and the public are aware of. Some of these we'd like them to buy tickets to. The Winston-Salem Fairgrounds is sponsoring an indoor concert series this summer. They've had a couple of events that have gone over very well, but they have three more concerts coming up. One on Saturday, June 29, which is Kim with Envision Concert. On the Saturday, July 26, they have Mark Chestnut with Presley Barker. And on Saturday, August 17, they have Joe D. Messina. So encourage folks to go and check out those shows, which we think will be very, very good for the community. In our Recreation and Parks area, we've got some movies in the park that are about to happen. On Saturday, June 15, there's E.T. at Parkland Park at 7 o'clock. And on June 22, Saturday, June 22, Jurassic Park will be playing at Washington Park, which is very appropriate for that park, if you know there's some dinosaurs in the park there, I think. And then Rocket the Quarry on Friday, June 28, at the Quarry at Grant Park from 7 to 10, with fireworks, food trucks, and live music. So I'm told that's always a very popular event. So encourage folks to stake their spot out early, I think, for that evening. Also want to let the council and the community know that our Department of Sustainability is going to be hosting some conversations about access to healthy, affordable food near where residents live or work. And there's three discussions planned on these healthy, affordable food conversations. On Friday, June 14, at 4:00 p.m. at Haynes Hosiery Community Center. On Thursday, June 20, at noon at the Rupert Bell Neighborhood Center. And on Wednesday, June 26, at 7:00 p.m. at the Sprague Street Community Center. And all those meeting dates and times and our information are on our website. You can go to the cityofws.org/870/sustainability. And so all those events are out there on our sites. And we did saw this week that we were also ranked as one of the best places to live again in the U.S. by the U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2024-25 Best Places to Live rankings. And so we're pleased that we're continuing to do well in those kind of polls. With that, I'll stand ready to answer any questions.
Questions of the city manager? Thank you, Mr. Pope. We do have one honorary item tonight, so may we do item H1, please.
Item H1, proclamation declaring June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas the City of Winston-Salem observes the month of June as a time to celebrate our dynamic LGBTQ community, raise awareness of services, foster dialogue to promote a more diverse community. And whereas, in recognition of the city's nondiscrimination ordinance passed by the city council on March 22, 2021, to expand the role of Winston-Salem's Human Relations Commission to support the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom of discrimination. And whereas, as the City of Arts and Innovation, we accept and welcome people of diverse backgrounds who contribute to the civic, cultural, and economic successes of Winston-Salem. And whereas, the City of Winston-Salem celebrates its diversity every year during the Pride Winston-Salem Festival and Parade held in the downtown Arts District on Trade Street. Attendees come from around the state to celebrate and be their true, authentic selves within a safe space. Now, therefore, I, J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and encourage citizens to support the numerous LGBTQ plus events during Pride Month.
Thank you. We do have with us tonight Jerry Moran, who is the President of Pride Winston-Salem, to receive the proclamation. Jerry?
Jerry, on behalf of the city council, the amplifier's working tonight. We're happy to present this proclamation to you, making this month LGBTQ plus month in Winston-Salem. And thank you for your leadership with this organization.
Thank you.
On behalf of the LGBTQ community of Winston-Salem, thank you all for your support. We look forward to having you on June 22. We will definitely share this with the other LGBT organizations in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Ms. Moran's on the agenda tonight, also being reappointed to one of our boards and commissions, so thank you for that as well. Tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from consent agenda will be enacted one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. As you know, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website, and you just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to boil for consent?
C4.
C4. That looks like that's all. Can I have a motion for the balance?
For approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
The balance has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's unanimous. May we have item C4, please?
Item C4, resolution authorizing easement acquisitions for the Bethaba Road Culvert Replacement Project located in the North Ward.
Mayor Protem?
Mr. Huff, there is not hardly a day or two that goes by that I am not asked about Bethaba Road. And I just want you to give a quick update, at least somewhat like Lakeview Bridge, that the process is moving, because when I tell people that it may be next year, I think I may have to call 911 when I tell them that. But if you could, sir, please.
Absolutely, Mayor Protem. First and foremost, good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bethaba Road is moving. At the public side, moving slowly, but it is moving. As you're aware, tonight, we're acquiring easements for the property, the TC, and the permanent easement areas. And we are submitting permitting packages to the state and the feds for floodplain and all the impacts to the stream there. We hope to get these back in an expeditious fashion, so we can go to construction possibly fall of this year is what we're looking at. The citizens in the neighborhood have seen some activity out there in the form of tree removal, where we have removed the trees to get a better look at things and to kind of advance the project from some pending federal legislation. So moving forward, hope to move faster, but this is a complicated project, so.
Thank you, Mr.
Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. I move for approval of item C4. Second.
Motion seconded by Councilmember Cipio to approve item C4. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of a number of items, five public hearings on different issues. There are items related to the Moravian Church requiring funding and sites from us for development of five affordable housing units there, as well as recommendations for appointments and reappointments to city boards and commissions. When these public hearings are called, the person in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. We'd ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and give us your name and address for the record. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, public hearing and consideration on resolution confirming assessment role for demolition of housing unfit for human habitation, recommended by Finance Committee.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this public hearing regarding this assessment role? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Recognize Mr. Clark, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of agenda item G1.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G2, please?
Item G2, public hearing and consideration on a petition to close and abandon an unnamed alley between Brent Street and South Sunset Drive, and notice to all persons interested in the closing thereof, located in Southwest Ward.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this potential street reclosing and alley closing? Seeing no one, I declare a public hearing closed. Recognize Councilmember Mundy.
Thank you, Mayor. I approve, or rather, I move for approval of agenda item G2.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mundy, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, public hearing and consideration on a petition to close and abandon an unnamed alley off Pope Road, and notice to all persons interested in closing thereof, located in the South Ward.
Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who's opposed to this closing and abandoning of this unnamed alley? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Recognize Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another example of a piece of property that's been abandoned for a long time as a highway or a road or an alleyway within the city. We have a number of these around the city, and none of them are functioning in any way, except weeds are growing in them and neglected without ownership. The best thing to do is to transfer the ownership to the adjacent property owners, and that's what we're doing here. Put them back on the tax record, if nothing else. So I move approval of item G3.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. May we have item G4, please?
Item G4, public hearing and consideration regarding the eligibility of R.J. Reynolds Tobacco Company Buildings 82 and 83 for listing in the National Register of Historic Places.
Thank you. Would you give us a brief summary of what we're doing here?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. My name is Heather Brantland. I am one of your two historic resources officers. And as you may remember, we are a certified local government here in Winston-Salem, which means we are a partner in the federal preservation framework. And that means we get the opportunity to comment when properties within the city are being proposed for listing on the National Register, as this property is this evening, by a private owner. The property is located on the north side of 25th Street, between 52 and the railroad tracks in the northeast ward. This is an aerial of the photo. You can see the two buildings that were built in 1919, and then the hyphen that has always connected them, so they've really always functioned as a single unit. And the National Register boundary does include the abandoned railroad line to the east of the property, or excuse me, to the west. These are photographs of the building from East 25th and East 27th Street. I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but these buildings were built in 1919 when Reynolds began to look for storage outside of downtown for its tobacco. So this was a tobacco warehouse that was built next to the rail lines, so they could put the tobacco leaves on the cars and bring them down here to Depot Street. And it's the earliest known warehouse building that was built according to Reynolds' standard specifications, which is one of the things that makes it special. So it's being nominated for its significance locally with respect to our industrial history. The period of significance begins in 1919, when the buildings were constructed, and ends in 1973, because that's 51 years ago, and nothing exceptionally significant has happened since then. The buildings also have to possess integrity, which means they have to really still have their form and character they had during the historic time period, and they do possess all seven aspects of integrity. The Historic Resources Commission had a public hearing on this item on May 1. No one spoke in favor or in opposition, and the commission unanimously found that the property meets the criteria for listing. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have for me.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions of Heather? Thank you. And this did come out of the General Government Committee. Mayor Protem, if you're.
Yes, Mayor. I move for approval of agenda item G4. Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Oh, I'm sorry. I did not. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for catching me on that.
Oh, my goodness.
Keep me official here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who'd like to be heard on this proposed nomination of historic properties here? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed, and then we can proceed. We do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate that. Item G5?
Item G5, public hearing and consideration of 1825 Mansfield Street, Southwest, Southeast Ward, ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of a structure. This was continued from May 20, 2024.
So I understand that we do need to continue this to the August 5 meeting. Councilmember Taylor, if you're in agreement, would entertain a motion to continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I move that we continue this item into the August 5 meeting of the city council.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you, and that's unanimous. We will continue the public hearing as well to that time. And item G6?
Item G6, consideration of items related to funding to the Moravian Church for development of four lots for affordable homeownership located in the Southwest Ward.
Chantel?
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, members of the council. Chantel McLam, Neighborhood Services Director. The item that's before you tonight is approval to authorize the sale of four city-owned lots for $1 each to the Moravian Church in America, Southern Province, and to also provide the organization with GAAP financing in the amount of $160,000 in the form of a forgivable loan. The parcels are located in the Southwest Ward, and Moravian Church in America plans to build four single-family homes available for affordable homeownership at a projected sales price not to exceed $194,130. I'm available for any questions I'm.
Any questions? Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Ms. McLam. I'm looking at the renderings, and I have a first question. Do we have any renderings that show the sides or the back of these homes?
We do not. If you'd like to hear from the architect, they're here, and they can probably answer any questions that you might have on the sides and rear.
Okay.
If you will, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Chris Dolan. I live at 4517 Cooper Cove Road in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. I'm sorry.
Yes, the question was, do you have renderings to show us that will show the sides or the backs of these homes?
So as far as the color renderings have been made, they've been made for the front to show the aesthetic of the house. We do have plans considered with the basic model. I can answer any specific questions about dimensions or features of those plans, but as far as a rendering, not at this time.
Could you describe the, how the sides and back will look?
Yeah, absolutely. So the home is basically a 40 by 20 footprint. We found that to be the most desirable feature to fit on most city lots and also allow for the possibility of a possible ADU on the property. From there, we've addressed some aesthetic concerns of city staff members to include gabled roofs, a gable accent on the front of the home, also a larger porch space, and increased number of windows from the preliminary ideas that we had for this project. So the front of the house has six windows on it, including, and then the front door. Each side of the house has two windows on it. The rear of the house has one window on it. That takes into account the staircase and some other things that are taking up wall space on the back of the house. And there is the, there's also a rear door on the home.
That answers my question. So the rear of the house has one window. Is it upstairs or downstairs?
Upstairs.
How many bedrooms are upstairs, or how many rooms are upstairs?
Three.
Three. So are there rooms upstairs without windows?
Yes, the bathroom would not have a window upstairs, and that would be it, actually. Every, so every room in this house is designed by our drafting team at Fine Line Homes to meet light and vent code, in accordance with the North Carolina Building Code. So every room's going to have a window in it, except for the bathroom.
So for the rooms upstairs that do not have a back window, what size window do they have on the sides? Are they the same size as what we're looking at on the front?
Yeah, one of the incredible honors of mine has been to design an affordable home. And so we've actually made all the windows the same size. So they're all three by five windows, which is in accordance with a good standard-sized window that we put in all of our homes, but also allows us to create a margin in the home that is, keeps it affordable.
I'm glad that you all increased the windows for safety purposes and for mental health. Next question. I see that there's pavement. Is there a paved driveway, or is this going to be gravel?
Yep, yes. Every home will come with a paved driveway. It's one of the things we talked through with city staff.
To accommodate how many cars?
Likely just one on these lots, these first four. One of our main considerations in planning this project was how do we account for a spacing that meets setback standards and is in accordance with the neighborhood, but also something that provides the most green space and, again, the opportunity for planning in the future accessory dwelling units on these properties. So it'll have driveway access and a driveway parking spot. And for these four, the first four units that we're planning, it will likely be one car space.
And it looks like a paved walkway leading to the front porch as well?
Yes, ma'am. There'll be a sidewalk going from the driveway to the home.
Okay. Now, let me ask one last question. The siding, will the siding be seamless, or will there be seams all over?
So we don't do any seams on our siding. All of our vinyl siding on our homes, and the stone would be without any kind of water break or anything like that that you see in a lot of different products. They tend to cause maintenance issues and concerns. So we don't do that on any of our, on any of our homes.
So the siding will be one seamless strip?
Well, siding is manufactured in 16-foot lengths, but yeah, it would overlap each other, and there would be no.
Seams?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm just going by what I saw with the homes that you built. That's why I'm asking the question, because there were seams everywhere. Okay? Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chantel, did you have another contact?
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Mr. Larson had a comment?
Yes, in the packet, and we saw four different renderings. I might assume that one of those buildings goes on each of the four different lots.
That is our intent at this point, yep. And just to be clear, one of them is a reversed rendering of the most popular one in testing.
Right, right. The design, the design for the one, the first one that we saw last time, I think, was a fairly straightforward cable-end building. But what we're looking at in the other three right now is more of a linear ranch style.
That's right. We've been exploring different options with the developer, the Moravian Church, and the city staff to make sure that we're meeting any desires or criterias, as well as keeping it as affordable as possible for this project.
I think, I think the design, the variations in design is important here, because four of the number-one model would not be acceptable.
Absolutely, especially with the four-in-one location. That's our desire is to make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible or remaining affordable.
Councilmember Mundy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are all on a cul-de-sac.
That's right.
What's your plan for building? Do you build one from start to finish and then go to the second one? Or are you consecutively build or concurrently building?
Yes, it's our intention to concurrently build all four as basically as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Thank you. I know you guys have put a lot of time and effort on this and have suffered some slings and arrows in terms of design side. If you drive the street that these houses are going to be built on, these houses fit in. They look like they should be there. They will not stand out as, you know, an other house. So I really appreciate the effort that you guys have put into it. I also recognize that every time you guys make a design change or add things to it, it makes it less affordable for people to buy. So there is, you know, there's a tight rope, and one side is, people can't afford it, and the other side is the neighborhood won't accept it. So it's a really difficult, a really difficult ledge to walk. So I appreciate all the effort that you guys have put in on it, and I hope to see you guys build a whole bunch of these in Winston. Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
I just will say the, I don't know if you did the original design, but these designs are much better. I do like the fact that the windows are bigger, just day and night difference. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we do recognize, Mayor Protem, this item came out of your committee, and I recognize you for a motion.
Thank you. Anytime that we can collaborate with others on the playground of housing or anything else when it comes to providing services to our citizens, we thank you. Because we know we can be difficult to work with, but we are working on all of that. Because, again, the world is changing, and we all need each other. If we're going to do anything about this housing crisis that Winston-Salem is in, it's definitely a positive that we work and develop relationships with all developers, all banks, institutions, home builders, realtors, churches, nonprofits. Nobody should be left behind, because, again, we need all of you. And with that, I thank you. Thank you so much. I move for approval of item, agenda items, G6.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mundy. Councilman Clark?
A real quick question. The map we have shows three lots, and you're building four houses?
I'm not exactly sure of the map. There should be four on there, yes.
I'm looking one that, the red borders.
Which attachment is that?
I think one of them is where the lettering is.
Okay, thank you. I withdraw the question.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor to approve this project. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. We lost our screens up here, so. There, there, that's seven in favor, one opposed. Councilmember Burke voting no. All right, thank you. Item G7, please?
Item G7, Mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the City County Utilities Commission. Calvin McRae, term expires June 2029.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. May we have item G8, please?
Item G8, Mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission. Mashika Jefferson, term expires May 2027.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember McIntosh, seconded by Councilmember Cipio. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item G9?
Item G9, Mayor joins recommendations for reappointments to the Community Sustainability Program Committee. Zebulon Carter Berry, term expires May 2026, and Leah Lavin, term expiring May 2026.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Larson, seconded by several folks. We'll give it to Councilmember Monday. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. Item G10?
Item G10, Mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the Human Relations Commission. Jerry Morin, term expiring January 2026.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. And item G11?
Item G11, Mayor joins recommendation for reappointment to the Citizens Police Review Board. Karen Bartletti, term expiring April 2027.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Monday, seconded by Mayor Protim. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, council. That's all the items on our agenda. Councilmember Monday, go ahead.
I just want to say, everyone up here knows, and a lot of you folks sitting there, but people listening and watching, might not realize the time and commitment it takes to serve on one of these commissions or committees, and it takes a while to identify these people. You get three or four noes before you get a yes.